Good evening. Before we start, remind everybody to mute your cellphones or turn them off, please. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to a special meeting of the City Council of the City of Pierceville to be held today, Monday, April 20th. The time is 6:00 P.M. May I have a roll call, please?
Mary Mark.
President.
Julián Hernández.
Here.
Richard Ganga.
Here.
Sonia Hernández.
Here.
Brenda Dernia.
Here.
Eboniaco.
Here.
Roland Tumoguía.
Here.
And then they never do use.
We have a form. Let us stand for our application for college pledge.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for hearing us here this evening. But it's constantly, we, uh... We here to, uh, please all citizens in Pierceville, that, uh, with me, that all the decisions we made for the government of Pierceville, be your name and pray amen.
Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four A, Discuss and Consider Declaration of Public Health Emergency Number Four, in accordance with state law. This is an action item. We need to entertain a motion to discuss, please.
Motion to discuss.
May I have a second?
Second.
On favor? Yes, sir.
Mayor and City Council, believe, uh, if you had it for you, actually, a revised version of declarations you should have. I would apologize, it wasn't, the correct one wasn't in your packet. Uh, so you should have it there in front of you, uh, the last declaration. It's the same declaration as emergency item, is emergency declaration number three. Um, and you didn't include the church provision in that, uh, the church service. Saying that this emergency declaration for, um, what we put in, and it's, it's a tougher discussion, would be the, uh, how long it's going to affect you for, as, as most of the councils probably aware, the governor has, uh, has some timeline as far as what he would like to move forward with opening the business. From what I gathered, and we did get a publication today from, from, uh, T N up, to kind of give us an idea of how this is straightened up. But I think he wants to move forward, the governor, that he just wants to move forward with opening up some businesses on the 24th, uh, of this month. Now, this, this, this declaration is seven days, if, if the council wants to move forward, which would put us at the 27th, okay? So there is some conflict there, the dates and timelines. Um, so I know that's something that, you know, I did the best I could with the information that I had. And so that's, that's something that we will need to address tonight. On the, uh, on the governor's, and the governor's here, on the governor's declaration, um, this is, this is the summary, okay? Uh, the question was, can you summarize the governor's orders that apply right now? The following are in effect now. Stay home, work home, stay home, work home, with exceptions for essential businesses and activities, is still in place. That, uh, that last order was, was the 14th order, I guess, was released on April 17th. Business openings, this is what I've been wanting to hear, the council wants to move forward with some of these decisions as far as businesses opening here in Pierceville. Reemphasize the stay at home, work home, provided that any business may, may open up only if you can provide pickup or delivery service that follows CDC guidelines. And directs governor's strike force to even make recommendations on more openings by mid first. So what, what that's saying to me, whatever I read there is, uh... Is that if you cannot do the, you know, curbside stuff, ma- mail care and stuff like that, that means it's logical, you can't really do it, I mean, it's, it's not, it's an impossible service as far as, I don't think somebody could grant me there. But that's, those are things like that that we have to consider in this declaration. The other thing that I just found out, just a minute, a couple minutes ago, is I think some people have the impression that we're opening up the local parks. That is not what we're saying. Uh, state parks are open, as of today. Local parks, to my knowledge, unless the council wants to move forward with something tonight, uh, local parks are not, not open. And in terms, I think, right now, uh, I need to get some folks out there, but I think the people, kids are already playing basketball out there at, uh, the park here. So, so again, I think that's an misunderstanding, maybe, is that they assume that local parks are open. And that's not the case. Uh, we have not agreed to open the parks at the local level, uh, this year in Pierceville. So, uh, I, I wanted to make sure, point those out, um, again, the timelines and the fact that it's a fluid situation with what the governor, uh, wants to develop and improve, I'm sure. It's just there right now, what it is that we need to see, and we'll do. Uh, I think, I think the declaration we had now, I guess, is perfectly good. We've got a lot of, people have been pretty compliant, very compliant. Um, we, we go, people are wanting to get back to, to jobs, uh, but I think overall, the responsibility is pretty good. So, that's all that I have, uh, but I just wanted to make sure the council is aware of some of the pending, pending issues.
So basically, um, the businesses that, which are your restaurants, are doing the curbside already. However, if they can extend, um, what is, um, what is this, what? It's really?
Oh, true.
Charge of box, if they can video conference from inside, if somebody wants to purchase something, should bring it out. That's okay, and the license to go inside the store.
As long as, flower shops are the same, as if they can order something outside, you know, to kind of like a pickup type of system. I mean, again, it's just your businesses that you know, they can't do business without having a building, so.
Yeah.
So, so the governor is not going to release that, or allow that, for that to, this Friday.
To Friday, this Friday.
This Friday.
That's Friday.
And, and the other thing is that, I think, he releases some information on Monday as well, to include other, uh, possible openings.
So, we should wait until Tuesday?
What I'm thinking is, let's wait till Monday, just to see what's gonna happen. If, if we have effect, let's wait till Monday, see what's gonna happen, and then include everything.
Meet, so Monday, it's Monday, we can meet in 72 hours, or actually, we can meet.
Well, understanding that some of the declarations, whatever goes into effect from Friday may conflict with the governor's directive. That's what I want to make sure, you know, our current, our current declaration may conflict a little bit with what the governor's saying will happen in Friday.
Well, we, we can't, we can't make it effective Friday.
Right, right, I, I, again, all I'm saying is, is that your, your, your declaration, uh, will completely conflict. We're, we're saying that we, uh, we make it effective today, right? And you, you, it runs till Monday, next Monday. During that timeline, Friday, the governor's gonna do some things that are gonna conflict with Pierceville.
He's also gonna do some things Monday, yeah.
Right, right.
So, if we're moving forward.
So, so we should, yeah, I'm saying we should wait till Tuesday, till after Monday, to meet.
I think we should, and I, I don't know, so, so, some of our local businesses that may be, like you mentioned,
Mm-hmm.
uh, I think some of them are already due to Friday, but, but.
We, we can have this declaration expire on Friday, if that's what you have me understanding? Does that make sense?
No, no, no.
I don't know. We can make it effective Monday after, if the governor declares other terms.
Oh, in the meantime, I guess my question is, what do you want to do in the meantime? Because if that person expires today, how long does it expire?
Extended.
It expires today.
Extended.
You extend it until next, until next Monday, if that's what you want to do. I just wanted to make sure, so, I would think. But again, uh, the, the current one doesn't conflict, will conflict a little bit with what the governor's saying that's gonna happen in Friday. Does that make sense? It's fine with me.
Yes, sir.
Here, um, I was gonna ask you, for your professional opinion as a P.A., um... The surrounding cities are going with mandatory mask, uh, uh, out in the community. What do you feel, how do you feel about that?
Um, we don't have inactive cases, however, people do pass from here. I highly recommend it, but it's up to you guys to make a mandatory. I highly recommend that people do wear masks out, but to make a mandatory has to be a council vote.
Same, and the reason. And the reason I'm asking is because I, I feel, this is my opinion, I feel that upper, um, I wouldn't use the word management, but, uh, jurisdiction, uh, the president and, you know, the governor, I feel there that, that, I think that they're jumping the gun a little too fast, I think. You know, I think that we should just slow down and, and I think you, or maybe the council should appoint a, uh, a committee, a committee, uh, to try to figure out how to reopen Pierceville. You know, and I'm worried about what other cities are doing, you know, it's like, when I, when I'm playing.
Racist doesn't conflict with the governor, as long as it doesn't conflict with the governor.
And, and, and my idea is that I don't wanna play races with Philly, with Pleasant, Turney, Bali, San Antonio. I don't wanna play races with them, you know, I wanna make sure that, that we take care of our people. And I think, I think because exactly what you just stated right now, that there's no active cases here, I think that, you know, we're doing pretty good. But, once again, like, the upper government, especially today, is, I'm scared that it's, it's, it's gonna cost us to, you know, to, to get some, some after effect from that.
No, from what I heard, the, that's why they have the panel of experts. Yes, they're trying to open America, and if the herd begin to, um, elevate, that's when they're gonna make, um, make, um, rules more constrained, okay? So they have people monitoring, if, if they see that more people are getting infected, hospitalized, intubated, then they're gonna put a title loose back where they were. So that's why, I, I feel comfortable, once I listen to Abbott, um, how they are doing it. Because they have people monitoring numbers, and that's what's really important. So, I, I feel that they are doing it the right way, because it has to be done. Whether it's too soon, too, too soon or too late, we gotta get it done, and I think the way they're doing it is the best way.
But, but I have a problem with the fact that we rank in Texas 49th out of 51 states or whatever. In test, we're not tested hardly anymore. And so we don't know what's around us, we don't know how many of us have had a COVID.
And you're, you're reading an article on that.
We just don't know. So, I mean, I was gonna bring, uh, the mask issue up as well, because I think, I mean, our neighboring city here is doing it, and...
Great old city.
Not only that, but, you know, the last time we were in H U B, somebody, uh, was in there, and somebody I didn't recognize, it must have been somebody who was just coming through, stopping H U B.
Okay.
And then, and this, and this, uh, person was sneezing full lacs all over the place. And didn't even cover his mouth or whatever, so, and you know very well, that's when travel inside store.
Yes. So. Maybe it travels more than 16 weeks.
Oh, yeah. And it was, it was like, I mean, he was having a fit with it, sneezing, and so on. So we just, uh, saw it.
So, council, I'm understanding we can keep the same provision plus until Monday, and add the provision to the mask.
We don't have that provision, but we can add it later.
You can add it, maybe you guys get them. And then what will we do if somebody isn't complying, or if some, if there was a bad incident?
I, I think what we're doing initially, I think, we're just gonna do a pretty good document, we won't take it until later. Uh, he, he didn't know if they're gonna warn people, and then, uh, then, then now, we can find folks, you know, I think, I think people are listening, but again, he probably is a little bit more knowledgeable to what's happening on the streets than me. But I think people have, once you tell them, hey, I need you to put a mask on, uh, particularly in a public place, I think they listen. But again, I, I, I don't know.
I, I mean, I, I think the majority of the people will, uh, will, will follow, will follow, the majority of them will, honestly. But the ones that don't, I mean, my concern is this, if, if we do come across someone that's not wearing a mask, what do you, what, what do we do? I mean, are we gonna have masks on him to give them along?
I was about to say that, too.
We can, I think we can just ask them to do it.
Yeah.
And then, and they say, okay, I'll, I'll do it when I'm not traveling.
Wait, wait, I have a question. When you've gone out, now I've gone out, have the employees of these businesses, are they wearing masks?
Now they are.
Now they are.
Now they are, okay. So I think it's only, uh, right for us to ask our customers, like, wear a mask, please, protect everybody else.
We, we have, really, it's highly recommended, if that, if that helps, if we want to mandate for, I mean, to, to charge.
I think you should have masks.
And I think it should be mandated, where, if you want it to H U B or wherever you wear masks.
Probably not, sorry. Yeah, I think that's what it is, turning out.
Right, and I think that, uh, if we were to do a mandatory, uh, I think it would work, but of course, you're always gonna have that, for the individuals that are gonna be, like, you know, yeah. Not, not you, you know, I'm, I'm going to, and stuff like that, you know.
Well, 'cause I was at, uh, A7, and, uh, there was a bunch of people wearing masks, but anyway, there was a man there, and he was like, uh, over there, Dilly, they have to wear masks, what about over here? And the, the register, the cash register lady looked at me, and I was like, no, we don't have to. He's like, good, it's, nobody's gonna tell me I'm gonna wear a mask. And I just thought, oh, I don't know. And it could be a bandana. Yeah. You can't afford that, there's extra bandanas.
It's a basic requirement, not a mask.
Right, basic requirement.
Basic requirement, where you want to be in and out.
Turning up, or not, I don't know.
Would this be a, is this gonna be a ordinance?
Certain declaration, part of the declaration, you remember, you remember, you gave the mayor the revised declaration, and we'll have it executed today.
I'm just thinking for, for five years.
Well, it's part of the declaration, but, uh, you already have enforcement authority.
Okay, yeah. Oh, sure.
You already have enforcement authority in your court ordinances.
So, but what are they doing? So what's gonna be the consequence? Are there gonna be any house questions?
Well, well, I mean, I, the only consequence would be to issue a citation. The question is, uh, can we then, I guess, Bobby, maybe, can, can we then tell them, like, you're not allowed to be outside danger far and deep?
It's just as you would be enforcing all other ordinances. Uh, you, you've got the authority under the Texas Disaster Act, Article 75, and also the court of law. So, officer discussion, same so always, but you, you have the authority to enforce ordinances, uh, just like you would any others.
Uh, so, if, if we do them a citation, and they just...
Municipal court citation, just like all the others.
They just go about their day.
No, what, you can certainly, I mean, I was clear, you can certainly ask them to leave an enforcement authority to do so. It's a public health safety issue.
I, I understand it. I'm saying when the people, when, when, when the subject doesn't understand, I'm, I'm trying, I'm so, so that the council can understand what, what I'm gonna have to do.
Sure, that's also why you have the authority that the council adopted last week, uh, with respect to, uh, the classical misdemeanor.
So, in Philly, I'm not sure if this is correct or incorrect, but they're saying that you can't even, like, if you go into a store, they're not gonna let you purchase anything without you having a face covering.
Yes. Tell them, yes.
Yes, I just want to know this. And, I mean, if they're gonna loosen, you know, they should.
We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to notify all the business owners, and let them know this is what they're doing. And, and again, I don't know if they put that in the provision, but I'm sure that's, that's a deterrent, because we're not gonna sell you anything unless you put on a mask. So, will you?
Anything else? This was for discussion and action, to extend it until?
Next Monday.
Okay. Motion, please, to address item four A. So without any ask?
Without any mask provision.
Mayor, I'll go ahead and make a motion that, uh, we approve the declaration of a public health, uh, emergency, uh, number four, with the addition of, uh, mandatory mask requirement for all citizens of Pierceville at all times from age 10 on up.
To publicly, public places.
To public places.
Second. On behalf of my show of hands, motion carries and passes. All right, we went out to court, discussing and considering possible action to review the city's purchasing procedure to authorize the city manager to issue a request for proposal for permanent of meals for seniors and seniors and disabled citizens in an amount not to exceed $25,000 that would be previously approved by the council. Action item, entertain a motion to discuss, please.
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
On favor? Motion carries. Yes, sir.
Mayor, council, I'll be brief with this. Uh, you, seeing, uh, we've given a copy of the current purchasing policy, uh, as it relates to the issue of bills slash RFPs. Um, at page 11 of the packet, I included some language, it's from state statute, related to the issuance of, of bills. Now, the, the, I guess what's a little different here is, is, is the, the current policy here reads that that any deal over $15,000, uh, should go out for bid, uh, according to, to this statute, where I am, and a body of inheritance, I don't know. Um, so, so I'm saying that I wanna make sure that, um, that we understand that if, if this is what we wanna do. Uh, I think a couple of councilmen, I'm assuming councilmen, because of the plus side of all these, but, um, I'm understanding some of the, what they're gonna do, but, but, I think it's $25,000 that they, uh, that they, uh, the council approved, some of the, I don't know, I don't know. And then, the award, what I referenced there on page 13 is the award of the contract. Uh, if you look at page 13, I put it in yellow there. It's, it talks about the things that will keep you used to determine the hits and factors in RFP, to determine the best value. And again, this is, this is an all encompassing, this is, this is, but these are the things that you can utilize in issuing RFPs, as opposed to, open up and act, because I know we can talk about interpretation, but for lids, I'm talking about the working ones or, or whatever the product that you're trying to purchase, okay? This one is, is in reference to RFPs, is the way I got the best value type of bidding. And so it talks about all of the things that you can look, you can look at whenever you go, what is the purchase price, the reputation, the bill, and the goods and services, all the goods, goods and services, and the expenses, goods and services, you can use, how to use the bill to establish, to establish value, and so on, so. Again, it's not an exhaustive list, but I just wanted to make sure the council is aware that that's what's currently in statute. And, again, your credit policy references, uh, government's state statute. I don't know, anything else?
So, there's an issue here. Mayor, um, oh, I'm sorry.
He asked a question.
I'm just asking, what is the issue?
Again, I'm, okay, Mayor, uh, Mr. Hernandez, uh, when I was doing, uh, the project that, uh, uh, the council authorized on the, uh, that proposed $25,000, uh, I was reading some of the, uh, the dues and notes of the, uh, expenses for the city of Pierceville, because it's public funds, and, and I, of course, I went into trouble, I wanna make sure that we follow the T's and the R's. And one thing that came across, it stuck out, was the, uh, uh, the procurement process. And the procurement process has to be followed. And, uh, I, I was jumping the gun on, on going before the project, on trying to award, you know, uh, the proposals already, and without following the procurement process. So I called Mr. uh, Mr. Davis, and I told him about the procurement process, and he said, yes, that, that had to be followed without breaking the law. So that's the reason that I went to counseling the other, and, uh, can't remember, oh, it's that, not this, and I told him about the procurement process, that, you know, I don't have any goals. So I wanted to make sure that, you know, we follow everything to the T's. And that's the reason certainly it's, it's on the back of my agenda, you know, for the procurement process.
I have a question.
Yes.
Bobby, is, since this is, uh, city funds, going through the city process, uh, isn't, isn't it up to management to handle these funds, or procurement of these funds, or these, uh, spend?
I'm just, I'm trying to understand the question.
Okay, well, I, I don't know that we, can we allow somebody that is not in management to expend these funds?
No, no, this.
So this is gonna go through?
Yes, exactly, it's going, it's all gonna go through, uh, the city and its finance department.
Okay, and so the issue here then is, is whether we use a competitive sealed bidding process or not?
Proposal. Proposal? It's, it's listed, I think, that was a request for proposals. Uh, so again, the, I have a little, little experience, I guess, in procurement. Uh, but my understanding is, if you wanna go off of proposals, you can use, it's not necessarily low bid wins, with low bid wins, uh, project, or in this case, uh, meals, um, whatever the product you're purchasing, okay? So there's other factors, and again, you can see in statute that, that you can utilize, uh, to, to be able to procure these things. So if you, if you issue a request for proposal, that gives you some, some, um, leeway as to what factors you wanna consider.
Then issuing a request for proposal, it means we have to narrow it down to one bin?
Not necessarily. That, that's part of, this is not your, this is not a common expenditure of public funds. It's just not, I mean, how often do you even entertain the prospect of providing meals to, to, to your residents? It's, it's not very often. So you do have your purchasing policies, which require you to track, you know, to follow state law. But it also depends on, on any other purpose that you intend to pursue in pursuing this type of, you know, program. For example, what Mr. Saidwell, we had mentioned previously, was to stimulate the economy, to help local businesses. So as long as you design parameters that achieve a public purpose, that's designed to help your residents, your businesses, that's a permissible purpose. And then you have the flexibility to design an RFP consistent with that. For example, provide the best type of meals, a variety of meals, uh, don't go to one vendor, because you wanna spread it out for economic stimulus purposes, to help employment, to help businesses and so forth. You have that flexibility, because in the end, you're still gonna be making a decision as a council to select vendors, or a vendor, that's gonna provide meals at a cost that you think is the best value for the city, and the type of meals that you want your community to, you know, to, to have the benefit of. So it's not, you don't necessarily have to select one vendor. You can design an RFP with assistance of staff to select more than one vendor. Because right now, you don't know what proposals you're gonna get, but I think something that all of you would be interested in is, is making it an open and fair process. I mean, there are emergency provisions in state statute, and you have them in your policies to make, uh, to, to make certain purchases without going out for bids. Uh, but typically, it's gonna be for purposes of, you know, immediate threat to health, welfare, and safety of your residents. Now, you may not be there right now with a meal, but potentially, it could become this type of situation. Right now, we don't know that it is an immediate threat that you have to address, so you have time. But you can, you can draft an RFP consistent with letting everybody participate. And if they can come back to you, then, then they're gonna know that they have to, they have to respond with something that is gonna benefit this community. And on top of that, of course, your departments, related to code enforcement, public health safety, so long as they're licensed, you know, and regulated by the state, and your, your staff, you know that the meals should be prepared the way that they need to be prepared. But to answer your question, you can go with multi-vendors. Uh, you can design the RFP to give you, uh, an opportunity to let everyone participate, and give you proposals that you can choose from. And leave it open to say, we're gonna choose three vendors, five vendors, and these types of meals, so that we can help businesses, we can help keep people employed, but we can also provide meals at a good cost for our citizens. And being that it's not a common thing that cities do, it's hard for me to determine, from an RFP perspective, what the council feels is important to, to the winning proposal. Uh, again, of course, the price is gonna matter, again, the quality of, of the meal, um, is it local? Um, those types of things, I'm sure I could figure out, but I don't know if there's any, anything else that, that the council would like to include, have us include in the request for proposal, to say, hey, this is, these are the factors we're gonna consider in the award. That's, that's all that I need from the council, is if, if we, yes, is, is how are you gonna deliver? You know, are you concluding that as part of your cost? What is the, what is the cost per meal? Um, does it include delivery? Does it include, you know, those things are gonna be things, the factors that you look at, but again, overall, um, you know, there's a multitude of things that you can consider. Uh, I just don't know at all, I don't know if I'm missing anything.
Okay, have we determined where, what line item, where this money is coming from?
I think we have a contingency line item, uh, the administration. As much as I hate to, to utilize those funds, I think that's the only, that's the only, it's definitely a general fund. It's general fund money, Mayor.
General fund.
Uh, but it's, it's, uh, we, we talked about that, the contingency.
Now, now, not 15?
50,000, we have 50,000 in the contingency. So we could potentially, I don't know.
So we could potentially, I don't think we've utilized that money, uh, for anything. So we could, we can tap into that if we need to.
It's not under, under personnel?
It's under administration, it's under, uh, it's under contingency line item under administration. So it's, it's, it's in, it is a line item, cause I've seen, I think it's under administration.
Well, the churches are still feeding over seven hundred people a day, and they have enough funding until June, maybe the first week of June. So I'm not sure if we can overlap, which I don't see, we should do that, you know?
Should probably wait until after the church days, ours exhaust their, their, their funding.
Is it, is it, isn't it breakfast and lunch?
Yes, that's right.
No, they're only delivering, uh, they're delivering once a day, but they're, they're, they're also putting some, some kind of, uh, not a hot breakfast, but something that they can, you know, after next night, mind their ways.
Okay, uh, I have a question for, for Mr. Monmal. Uh, what live, do we, do we submit liabilities on these meals? They go out from the restaurant, who listens to liability, unless you get sick on some?
No, and that's a good question, that's why I mentioned previously, is that, you know, these businesses should already be state regulated and locally regulated. So long as they continue to do so and prepare meals the way they're supposed to be preparing. But keep in mind, state agencies and, and City Pierso still has to meet its obligation, uh, you know, uh, with regard to inspections and so forth. But from a liability, I don't see it. Uh, now, granted, most of the businesses that you are going to get responses from, uh, they have, they have their own insurance. You may wanna address it, you may not, but they're gonna have their own liability insurance. Uh, that might be something that you would want, uh, you know, to have considered. But I can tell you that by and large, in situations like this, you're gonna still have your government immunity available to you as you try to do something to help your residents. It would be, uh, nothing different than when there's a public emergency, uh, you know, that exists that you respond to because of a storm, an act of God, or even in, in a situation like this where, uh, you're going to have the immunity available to all of you, including your employees and officers and, and, uh, and the city of all. It's something to think about, it's not, you know, anything I'm particularly concerned about. Because, uh, if you look at what everyone is doing in this country to respond, uh, we're all, you know, everyone is acting consistently with the immunity that you're still having.
So is it fair to say with the whole crash today that our sales tax taxes will plummet as well?
If something may help me with this, I.
We're looking at it from a, from a standpoint, because we, we.
As much as we disagree, I'm sure we would disagree, disagree with even some of the council members, I, I recognize that. Uh, I would say, I'm saying that, that, yeah, we're, we're gonna look at, uh, we'll see something, uh, for sure next month. And we will know, and remember, sales tax is behind two months. So if you, if we're looking at sales tax for March, May, May or May sales tax, cause this, remember, this thing started in March. May sales tax will tell, um, will tell us how we're doing. And the, the, the telltale, the real telltale will be June as well. Uh, again, the projection we can give you, um, to me, our position is still the same, it's not gonna, um, we're not gonna, I don't, I don't, unless something wants to disagree with me, I don't think that, that our position from the last discussion we had will change. But anyway, anything else on there? No?
Well, we pray that the, someone will donate the money, you don't have to use ours.
We can use it.
For the seniors, yes.
Do you all wanna specific, maybe Mr. Seboli can be a specific as far as?
I'll give you a specific to the project we all, you know, except you.
Specifics on what?
Like, like, like the project that I had already out. How with the twenty-five thousand you can utilize? If you want me to explain, I can explain.
How do you, you tell us?
Well, I, I, I just keep, well, we need to hear maybe a little bit more details since you probably have more to tell us now than you did when you were organizing.
Uh, I have like fourteen volunteers that have, uh, what they've done is that we've gone by the board registration list, and we've gone street by street in the city of Pierso. And, uh, we have identified, you know, senior and, uh, disabled, very close to six hundred people that are in, uh, uh, they're qualified for this, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars, right? Unfortunately, uh, while doing my research, you know, I, I tried, you know, when I was jumping the gun, uh, I tried to estimate, uh, a plate, a plate that's gonna feed the elderly. Cause you know, Mayor, with all due respect, you know that the elderly don't eat that much. You know, so I, I wasn't looking for a nice plate or, uh, a chicken breast steak. I was looking for a chow's, senior citizen plate, okay, small. Uh, one is, uh, you know, like whatever comes with it, right? And then, uh, so what I did was, uh, I had spoken to, uh, some of these restaurants, uh, six restaurants as a matter of fact. And from those six restaurants, only four, only two had, uh, showed the desire to try to meet the, the, the price. And I don't wanna say the price right now because I don't wanna start giving out numbers to, uh, competitors that are gonna be doing proposals. But, uh, you can do, just do the math, you know, on the, the number of plates, two hundred and fifty plates a day, you know, uh, per, per restaurant. You know, uh, which is gonna be five, almost five hundred plates going out every day. And, uh, they were, they were showing more as what the price of that plate was, and it was very like next to nothing. You know, and what, what happened was that, uh, only two restaurants, one, one were willing to participate, and the other four didn't. So then, uh, I talked to, uh, councilwoman, the leader had asked me that how many people had participated, and I said two. So she took the initiative and asked two other restaurants, uh, and, uh, they decided to go in. So that's how we came up with the four, sup- supposedly, but that was before the procurement process. So like I said, now, you know, we open, we'll open back up and see how many people can, can, uh, you know, uh, do these proposals. But unfortunately, once again, I'll say that, you know, if you do the math, you know, you can't, I, I don't see, I don't see ten proposals in it. I don't see eight proposals in it, because it's only twenty-five thousand. And, you know, twenty-five thousand into five hundred plates a day is not gonna take you too far. You know, uh, you know, so that, that's one, that's one thing. And the other way we did it was that, uh, uh, take, for example, Ms. Hernandez, you know, she's one of the volunteers. And, uh, what she did was she got the list of all of the seniors that she knows of, okay? So then, uh, she, that's her list that she has, she has like four hundred of her list. And the reason why I went through that list because, was because whenever she picks up the plates, the way she's gonna do it, whenever it's awarded this proposal, there's gonna be time frame, like, for example, they're gonna be between three and five, okay? Because elderly, you know, they go to the party, so they're gonna be eating at seven in the fucking night. So they're gonna be eating between three and five. So, take for example, Ms. Hernandez, she's gonna have a time schedule at three o'clock. Okay, so at three o'clock, she's gonna go to whatever restaurant is, is to break the proposal, and she's pick up, she's gonna pick up thirty-five plates. And then she knows exactly where she's going. So the time, the ETA to deliver those plates is gonna be less than fifteen minutes, thirty minutes, because she knows where she's going. And it's just a delivery plate. Uh, also, um, the other thing that I had found out was because of this virus, uh, making contact and no contact with the restaurants. Mayor was at, uh, when, when she goes to the restaurant, and these, and everything is gonna be done beforehand. Uh, the restaurants are gonna have a list, of, like, take for example, Ms. Hernandez, thirty-five, you know, consequently, ten. You know, and whoever's gonna be helping out, you know, all the other people are gonna be helping out. So they're gonna have a number on the truck and the carts. So at three o'clock, they're gonna say, Ms. Hernandez, thirty-five. So they're gonna come out with thirty-five plates and put them in the truck, and she's gonna go. No money change, no, no signs, no, nothing, yeah. So Ms. Hernandez knows, she's got the list of thirty-five people that, that she's gonna deliver to. Okay, anytime people wanna ask, okay, where did this plate go to, did this Rosales, did this Martinez, whatever you want? Yes, okay, who had it, or, uh, if, if Mr. Councilor didn't have it, or Mr. Hernandez had it, or, or Councilor didn't have it. There's gonna be a list, an official list of everybody that's gonna be delivering a plate, not receiving a plate. It's not just, uh, just go, go give them a plate, no, we can have a list of everybody that's gonna be receiving a plate. And, uh, like I said, everything is all structured, but like I said, you know, I had to go through this procurement process, you know, to make, make sure it was, it was a process, it was a, okay? Cause I didn't wanna get in trouble, I didn't wanna let anybody get in trouble. Anything else, sir?
Is there anything that, uh, you might need from the business department to, cause I know that when you all do business with vendors?
Yes. We'll, we'll, we'll do, we'll structure the RFP, we'll get the information from, from Mr. Seboli. Uh, some of the detailed information as to, you know, dates, as to when he'd like this to start. Uh, you know, what, what they're proposing as far as timelines and, and all that good stuff, and then just get some more details from him. Uh, and then, once we have that information, uh, we may ask for insurance, I, I, I don't know that we'd want to do that. Uh, there's some indemnification clauses that we normally go by, um, but I don't know that we'd ask for insurance, uh, for this type of, uh, service. Um, but it would be something to work, I'd, I'd have to give Bobby to, to see if there's anything he would recommend. But I don't think, personally, I don't think there's a reason, other than the indemnification clauses, I don't see that it would be a reason for any of that.
I guess we're, 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 we're.
No.
So what about, what about, um, TML covering city council activity?
I'm sorry?
If some of our city council members are involved in distribution, uh, are they covered through TML doing that? Or are they on their own, should they have, or not, should they have an accident? Uh, I mean, is there separation there or not?
And it also depends on the details that, that the RFP would, uh, but, uh, to answer your question, right off the bat, no. Could it be possible? Yes, with the rider, but that would also depend on how these meals are gonna be delivered and so on. It just, that, that's part of how you're gonna structure this RFP.
Right.
I don't know about, you know, what we're talking about right now is procurement, not the approach to delivery.
Right. And, and part of that, again, I think Bobby was right, is, is the procurement of it is, again, uh, we're saying, based on what I know is this work that, as far as the delivery of the, the meals is voluntary. I mean, we, we, the city, we don't require ourselves of any, any of that type of, you know, we're gonna go deliver, and we want the city to, to cover our costs for, or, or cover, you know, liabilities for delivering, we, we normally, we don't do that, to be quite frank, we don't do that even when you're driving all the way to council meetings. I mean, you're, you're in essence doing a lot of what your work is, you're elected, but a lot of it can be considered, in my opinion, voluntary. You come in here with, with the assumption that you'll be fine, but you never, I mean, it's just gonna cost you.
So, so when you give a list of the, uh, the, uh, senior citizens that are here providing, uh, plates? I mean, is that something that, I know in school, just we always have to have every piece of paperwork on file for, for auditing purposes?
Good question, I think.
I, I, that's right, again, I said, I have that.
Oh, okay.
Yes, I have that. And the reason he had trouble answering it, because, uh, I hooked up with the, uh, uh, the food manager that we delivered, and we didn't keep track, that we, like, were, you know, that we just passed along, but, uh, we didn't work or go, but anyway. Uh, but I have, I, you know, I can give you a master list, I, I call it a master list. You know, that, uh, every, our conscious is gonna happen, you know? Because, uh, once this, this thing gets off the ground, telling me, you know, people are gonna be calling and saying, so, so, my list, uh, at every time, really has to be this. You know, and, uh, you, you're gonna know, okay, like, analysts, yes, okay, uh, take for example, uh, Sony has it, or Councilor Yento has it, or Councilor Gagarin has it. So you'll know exactly who has that list, uh, or what, what is on that list.
I was trying to make reference to the, to the audience, so that we have a few more files.
Yes.
One last question on the contingency funds, do we normally use that for in class?
Contingency, Mayor, uh, I don't know, I'd have to look to see what we used it for last year. Uh, we do have, there were some, we recall, there were some, I mean, some expenses this year that we've already taken on that, that were not budgeted. Uh, one being, um, the, uh, oh, rate study, that was one.
Rate study.
That was one of them, there's another one, um, that was, uh, I think the audit, the audit that we had. Uh, I have, I think there's two or three more that, that were not expenses that we had accounted for this year. Um, but, but we definitely need to, um, make sure that, you know, we're okay. We're, I think we'll be, we're talking to the council, I think we'll be okay, we still, should still, um, well, we're, we assume that the economy stays. If it were to stay what it's at, we're gonna be okay, now, it's, it's gonna be a challenge, I mean, but, but to answer your question, yeah, there were some expenses that, you know, were not accounted for during the budget process.
Any other question, comments?
There's another question there, I wanna make a motion. It's a long motion, because, uh, I tried to, you know, make sure that I followed the, the procurement process, uh, the current procurement process. Because, uh, I believe Mr. Reyes gave us, uh, uh, a new procurement process that needs to be addressed by the council on a later date. So that's why I put the, the current procurement process that we have right now. Uh, so it's, it's a long motion, and I'm hoping that, uh, you know, Crystal can follow, can follow on it, you know? Okay, so, uh, if I'm in here, uh, I wanna make a motion to follow the city of Pierso, uh, current procurement, procurement process, policy, and to advertise in the local paper for the, for one week starting April the twenty-third, uh, twenty-twenty. Uh, proposals, uh, should be addressed to city managers, technical areas, and will be, uh, and, and the proposal will be open on Friday, May the first. Proposals will be for one, one meal, a dinner for one week, every, every day, starting on May the, uh, on May of the fifteenth. May fifteenth, uh, two hundred and fifty plates a day should be, can be, uh, proposals. Uh, a word proposal to the top four proposals on May the fourth at Specialty Council Meeting, start the project on May the fifteenth. That is my motion there, I know that we had talked about starting the project on May the first, but because of the following, trying to follow the, doing, having to follow the procurement process, it had to, you know, fall back, uh, uh, two weeks later, you know, for, uh, to follow the procurement process, to make sure that we're legal with the, uh, the focus.
Question, it's okay?
Yes, you mentioned for one week, okay? If, if, uh, local restaurant wants to put in a, a proposal for one week, providing meals for one week, okay? Uh, that's gonna limit the number of, of, uh, restaurants that we can actually use, because, uh, I don't, I don't know if we have money for more than thirty weeks, or what, I don't know, depends.
Or is this, is this two weeks? Is this two, yeah, the twenty-five thousand will only go for two weeks?
It's a two-week program.
Yeah, a two-week program.
Basically, so then we're narrowing it down to two restaurants then? Because if you're saying for one week, providing meals, but we just leave it open and, and say, just to provide a proposal, and then let, let the manager figure out, uh, how many restaurants to include?
I don't know that we'd include any restaurants, we just, we'd leave it open and say, you're welcome to put in a proposal, we'll give you the, the, the dollar amount and what, what the council's looking for. Uh, but we wouldn't, we wouldn't restrict it to a certain amount, like a five or six restaurants, that wouldn't be something that we, we would do, cause that, yeah, I, I don't think that would.
So then we're back to square one, only two restaurants will participate?
Well, uh, yes and no, because of, uh, the jumping the gun and explaining to these restaurants, you know, the, the amount that we have, the twenty-five, and how, how low they can go, or that, that's how low that, you know, really they, they could go. Uh, those are the four, four restaurants that, uh, participated. But like I said, now, to do it legal, we're just doing it open. And like I said, take for example, one restaurant that didn't participate, they're gonna read this, and they're still gonna do the math, and they're still gonna say, well, I still can do it. You know, that's, that's all purpose of this, you know, cause regardless of how you dissect it, you know, it's, it's very limited on the, the amount of, uh, that we can pay out for the plate. You know, we can't, like, take for example, I'll give you an example, uh, you had a phone call from, uh, an individual in town that said that he wanted me to, instead of, uh, doing the, the X amount of dollars of the plate that I had on the total, he said double it to, you know, whatever it was, that he wanted me to double it, and he gave the elderly a dead plate. And I said, it, it won't work, I said, they, they won't eat a dead plate. You know, I mean, I'm telling you, you know, so I tried to lower down to give more people a chance to participate in, in the program. So, yes, you're right, that, uh, two. So, yes, you're right that, uh, two restaurants will, uh, participate, but because of the work that we already done, uh, we, we're, um, we're sure that we can get four proposals, you know, in. And you, you never know, we might get six, you know, and, you know, after they do the, the math. But because of the work that I did already, uh, I don't think that we'll get more, more involved.
Well, I, I, I guess you kind of, like you said, you did, you know, you, uh, dropped the gun because there are some restaurants out there using GoFundMe and saying they're working with the City of Pearsall and we appear oblivious to what they're talking about. I have a screenshot right here.
Yeah.
So we can't use, I sent it to you. Can't use the city as, they can't advertise in saying that, um, they're in conjunction with the city and use a GoFundMe page because that's just not what, we are not even privy to that.
And, and that's why I, once again, you know, I put it on the agenda, you know, because to make sure that we follow the procurement process. I understand exactly what you're saying.
The, the other question I have is if, if the purpose is to help local restaurants.
Yes, sir.
Kind of keep in business a little bit, then we're only really narrowing it down to two.
Well, well, no, because the council, it's like, we're, we're, this procurement process, it's going to be open for everybody. Yeah, everyone, everyone's going to get a chance. Now, if they want to, because like I said, the profit margin for this, you know, and you'll see it, you know, I mean, honestly, you know, you do the math, you know, for five hundred plates going out every, every day for fourteen days, do the math, the, the, it, it's, it's, and I, I gave, I gave Mr. Reyes the math today, and it's, it's very little. So you look at the profit margin of restaurant on that, it, it's not, you know, it's, it's not that much. And I wish I could tell you exactly what the numbers are, but you can just do the math, five hundred times, you know, uh, tw- uh, uh, five hundred, uh, plates, uh, going out a week, okay, uh, uh.
Fourteen days.
Uh, fourteen days.
Yep, seven thousand. Uh, it's seventy and seventy is a lot.
Seventy, 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 seventy is a lot, yes. So, and, and, but that's, I, I understand what you're saying and, and that's a good concern, but that's why, after reading the following procedures, that's why I had to go this far, I had to go, there's no other way to do it, you can. And I didn't, I, once again, I didn't want to get into my volunteer's, I didn't want to get in trouble, I didn't want nobody to get in trouble. And yes, the merits, you're right, you know, uh, I jumped the gun on that. And but then after, after reviewing it, I said, I'll say, I got to do it right, I got to make sure that I come back and do it right. I got to cross my Ts and dot my Is. So, uh, but I think that, you know, your concern is a good concern, but now with this procurement process, we're going to open up territory. And I think that one, once one of the restaurants sees it and, uh, they might want to, uh, participate, you know, when they see the numbers, they're going to, they're going to fall back on. I wish I could tell you some of the restaurants that called me and said, no, you know, that can't go.
I think if, if the math is right, no, I won't give it to them, like, every penny's a, it'll be between three to four dollars a plate.
So three to four dollars a plate, so where's the economic impact for the restaurants?
No, because, because like I said, they're still going to be making a, a margin. But it's not maybe the margin of the twenty percent that they see on their, uh, uh, on, on the bill. You know, I'm pretty sure you heard the, the, we're in the detail, you know, it's twenty percent markup, twenty-three percent markup, and it's not theirs. You know, it's just the, the gratitude that was trying to open back up a little bit. You know, and that's what all this is about, you know, us doing our share, you know, to try to help a lot. And at the same time, open up the economy, open up businesses, open up the employees, and open up the citizens.
In the motion, did he, I thought you said two fifty?
Uh-huh, two-hundred-and-fifty plates a day, you know, for, for that restaurant.
Oh, for the restaurant, huh?
And then, uh, and if that customer, and I said, well, you're going to give it to two restaurants. Well, yeah, because, uh, two, two fifty, two fifty, that's your final plates.
That includes.
So anyway, I hope I explained everything, that's my motion. Unless I need to add something else.
Bobby forgot to.
Repeat it, don't forget.
We hand it up ready. Okay, there's a motion on the table.
Say it.
There's a second as well, one favor. Flat your hands. All of those, flat your hands. It's four to. Motion here is. All right.
Thank you, counsel.
Discuss and consider authorizing the city manager to issue a request for qualifications for engineering, surveying services for the City of Pearsall. This is an act, action item, and it takes a motion to discuss this.
Motion.
One favor.
Mayor, council, this is not a rewind of the last, uh, window, but it is, I guess, to some extent. Uh, on page sixteen of your, of your packet, uh, you do see that there's the same request for qualifications that was in your packet, I believe, last council meeting for to go out for engineering and surveying services. Um, the difference here is this, and you look on page twenty-two of your, of your packet, uh, you see the letter from L E Engineering, uh, say, they April seventeenth. And in, in that letter, it reflects that they don't know, um, they, they want to do another, I guess, future project, it's, it's here at Pearsall. So, uh, I guess they're, uh, they sent that letter, I should be like, seven seventeen from Mr. Vera. And, um, so with that, uh, my recommendation to the council, we need to pull this request for qualifications for engineering services. Uh, there, uh, there are a few certain self-disguised, I think, but we'll, we'll, we'll issue this, uh, put this out for a couple of weeks and then we'll look for, well, a couple of, at least two, three, and then three, um, to see if we can onboard or start a project, there are projects we may have. But we'll tell the council, at least there are a couple of projects that, that I'd like to, I'd, I'd like to give to the council in the next council meeting, um, related to grant funding. And it would require, some of these projects would require engineering services. Um, you know, the only, well, I'd say, one of the reasons that I think we may do something for our grant funding is we have a little bit of money, but not enough to do some of the projects we want to do. I'd like to do drainage project, fifteen, one drainage project, but I know that it's expensive, there's other projects out there, drainage projects and even downtime revitalization projects that I know have been discussed and, uh, we can go out, very least go out, actually, from, from grant funding, see if we can make some things happen. Uh, hopefully, this coming this way here. Um, most of these, most of these grants, and I'll, and I'll put talk about that after this, most of these grants do require a match, but it's not entirely cost-related. So I'd like to give us permission to go out for a request for qualifications, bring those back to you, recommendations for engineering services, uh, sometime, hopefully, I can give it to you, maybe, uh, first, first council meeting.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Uh, so we can go ahead, the city can go ahead and go ahead and select maybe, uh, a pool.
Yes, yes, we, we have, uh, there, there are, I mean, some of the, some of the conferences, we go to, we do approach all the time by engineering firms. Um, so there's, there's, there's firms out there, we'll put it out, uh, we'll put it out on TML, and we'll send some, some qualifications out through email, uh, s- see if anybody's going to respond to them, if they are, then we'll have a list of, uh, all the folks that we, we receive something from, we, we know of, all the qualifications from all the firms that decided to participate, and then we'll select from that, from that, uh, from that group. Uh, I do feel it's important to be, to be a good service, no matter how small the city, uh, that's, that's what I think is most important.
But we will have two or three to select for, for certain projects that can kind of compete against each other.
Yes, well, ideally, what you, what you want to do, and this is what I would recommend to the council, what I've seen in other communities, is, uh, you have your two firms that you select to do work on behalf of us. So if you go to your first firm and say, hey, look, you guys are, are specializing in certain area, drainage, uh, infrastructure, whatever the case is, um, then you go to them and say, hey, you know, work me up a task board for, for this type of work. If you're not happy with that, then you can say, hey, we can go to another firm and, and see if we can work above a more competitive task board. And Bobby, if I'm wrong, because I know I get this all the time from professional services, is that you don't hire somebody based on cost, but I'll let Bobby talk about that.
So it's first qualifications, uh, and once you rank them, uh, then you begin to negotiate with the first, the highest rank, to see if you can enter them to a contract. Uh, and that's when you begin to discuss, uh, you know, money. And then if you can't reach a contract, then you are required to move on to the second that you ranked. And then afterwards, you can certainly come back and say, we couldn't come up with a agreement with anybody. But you can also, uh, design a RQ to select more than one, uh, uh, you know, profession as well.
So you.
Does, uh, is there any other good projects that we can still be completing?
They do, they do, they have, uh, three that I can think of, talking here, uh, C D G project, uh, across the street there, and I lost it. Um, I know there's another project.
The Waterwell?
Yes, the Waterwell, Waterwell project, Cherry, Cherry project. So those three projects, the only ones that I can think of that they currently have.
But sir, I think, I think it's only two, because C D G, uh, I think, once we get awarded, we get awarded, though we have to put out the.
Oh, they, they are already.
Oh, they're already on this.
Those three, the council already signed. Yes. Let's, come on ahead.
Any other questions?
Uh, I'm moving in, we offer our city manager to issue a request for qualifications, RQ for engineering and surveying services for the City of Pearsall.
Uh, favor, motion here is announced, it's four to. Review and discuss the draft, uh, purchasing policy. Is this a discussion, right?
This is a discussion, yes. I didn't, uh, uh.
May proceed.
Thank you. Uh, I didn't want to act on this tonight because I just gave it to you tonight, so, uh, this is a rough draft of purchasing policy. It's very robust, you can see, uh, compared to the existing one, but there is a lot of information in it. Uh, we talked about, there's a lot of things in there related to some of the things we should be doing, uh, shouldn't be doing as far as, uh, purchasing. What I, what I would like the council to look at is, is page four of what I have. Uh, that's one of the things that we'll be addressing, hopefully, if the council has any questions, please call me. I mean, I'll, I'll try to help you as best I can to understand. But whenever we, we, uh, go out to buy, and whether we do it through a purchase order, or the contract, or whatever the case may be, uh, we normally try to get some sort of approval process, a threshold, as to what can, who can do what, and how much can you spend. Basically the questions, okay? I'll, I'll make it, uh, as simple as I can, uh, I won't be too technical, uh, so... But, but there's some things that on, on our level, at least on my level, I don't know that I want to see heavy purchases the city makes. Um, and I know the council feels the same way, uh, but in that respect, we do have some competent, you know, capable department heads that can keep track of their people. Uh, we, we had issued, so the council's aware, we had issued credit cards, which has been another issue, I know it's been a concern for council members, um, that, uh, we've issued just to department head, and I had one. Uh, there's some of us, I've, I've ventured to say, probably Santos and I had one, we don't, we don't really use it, we can use them on occasion. Uh, but folks normally use them, and it's been my, my experience with other communities, folks that are using them around the streets. And I'm talking the police, coworkers, those are the folks that are dealing with these card and law. And I'm saying that if you look at page four, you'll see the threshold as far as what we see, what we're asking people to provide. Uh, we, we normally ask for three things, it's above three thousand dollars is what we're asking for. You know, most, by statute, if we're buying any product, any of our services, we go through what they call the hubs, they're called historic community life businesses. We have to verify that, that there are no hubs in the area, and if there are, is we're purchasing stuff, we need to follow the process to, to reach out to and see if they're interested in buying products. So if, if they're interested, you can, you can put in a quote for our product, okay? I don't know about the hubs here in Pearsall, but I'm sure there's some. Uh, but again, that's, that's what we'll look into, that's, that's all controlled through the controller's office, uh, historic and real life businesses. So anything that's three thousand over, does require a little more, uh, due diligence on our part, we have to, we have to do a little bit more. And all that is, we're normally, uh, that will be passed with, with finance department, so they can keep track of that. Uh, the other, where it gets, where it starts getting to where we're starting to get to the council level, the far threshold, is anything we're, we're recommending, we're proposing, you know, two-to-five thousand dollars. But we are asking, we're seeing that we provide, uh, the option of, of doing a seal or, um, just free quotations. Uh, so, so that, so in this case, what we're asking us, we, we talk about seal bids, normally they come in like a traditional seal bid. You come in, you put your bid in, and it, it, uh, we open it at whatever they would determine.
Okay.
Uh, in this case, we're, we're, we're making it an option. The last one is, of course, anything fifty thousand or over, we brought to the city council. Uh, anything, whether it's an RFP, whether it's a remutation for bid, whether it's, whatever it may be, those things, those things need to come to the council. We, I, I have a, an issue with people's, and I know this has happened in other, in, in communities where people split bids, but that's also a restrictive. Uh, we can't, we shouldn't split bids to order to stay in the, the procurement process, or as far as the, the threshold. So I want to make sure that, that those things are addressed and they are all addressed in this, in this, uh, policy. Uh, you have, uh, again, there, there's some discussions on credit cards and how it's used, who can use them. Uh, that's all, that's all you have, all in here. We do have another thing in here on page seven, um, what I'm, what I'm suggesting, and I can give a link to council on this, I think it's, I think we're good. Uh, it's buy Pearsall program, so we're talking about buying, supporting our local businesses here. And there is some statutes in, in your local government that will address, uh, buying under the local community and being able to, to, uh, to show a little appreciation for them. So anyway, that's all in here, it's on page seven. Uh, you have, I have to work on some of the formula format. Uh, exemptions for competitor bills, bids, that's all included. Uh, there are some exemptions to, uh, there's some things that, that we can't, uh, put out for bid, for whatever reason. Emergency type situations, another thing, sole source purchases are another. Uh, so I just want to make sure the council is aware that there is a lot of, there's a lot in here. And I know it's, it's a lot to me, and I'm not going to ask you to read it all, but I, make sure you have it read by tomorrow. There's a lot in here. So our insurance requirements are in here, we're asking people to, to provide as far as insurance. Our, uh, bonding information is in here. Uh, normally, we don't, we, bigger projects, of course, will require bonds, there's other bonds that we, that we, I'd like to put in certain bids, being, that are big enough to, to protect the city. So bond information is in here and, um, there's a couple of things I want to put in here, but, but I'll, I'll keep working on it. Again, it's not a finished product, it's, it's pretty close to being.
Do you all hold like a ten percent of it?
Yes, you should hold retainings, normally we ask for five, five percent, but we could, we could, we could maintain ten percent. We have retainings, so you could go within the process, there's a five percent retainings.
Do you have ten percent of the, so, actual requirement?
We could, we could, uh, we could ask for that, I think the statute, the statute means it's five percent minimum. Um, we're talking, uh, we're, uh, oh, five percent. I'm, I'm not sure. But nonetheless, yes, we do have five percent of the prices, every time we pay on that, we keep five percent. Retain, retain. Uh, there's retained clause that we keep, we have in there. Then we have rental equipment that we never, we really haven't addressed in the whole policy. Rental equipment really shouldn't be, uh, department managers and, and really nobody from the city should be getting rental agreements without us taking them for day. I, I don't like to get that information, I don't like to just be, just renting or, or leasing equipment without, without us knowing. Uh, since some bad situations just happened, you know, things happen. So, again, it's, it's a pretty extensive policy, and we'll, we'll finalize it, we have it to the council, uh, you may. And if I have any questions about any of the, please, uh, please ask me.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Sure.
Four, discuss council revision to the rules of department for the City of Pearsall. It's an action item?
And this is, there's act, there's no action there.
No action?
No.
Okay, just discussion on all this.
Uh, Mayor, council, this, this item, uh, was brought to you in February, February twenty-fifth, I believe. And it includes the rules for the forum, uh, we had, we had presented a draft, I think we, we presented a draft back in, over in November, and then the revisions, first council's request on October twenty, oh, excuse me, on February twenty-fifth. I wasn't able to do the meeting, I think Bobby was as well. But what I did is I, I put, I corrected everything as far as what the council requested. I didn't put the question. I didn't particularly question the, the, the fixes in there, but they're all, everything was addressed. The, the one thing that I, the, a couple of things that I wanted to tear up here, was under the city council agenda on page one. It says that, um, and I wanted to get the clarification, legal council, and I wanted the council to hear. Under D, it says, "Agenda items placed on the agenda by mayor member to the council previously considered, and what by action is taken by the city council may not be placed on future agenda for reconsideration, or, for reconsideration one year of such action, unless directed by a majority of the council, to the city manager during a scheduled regular or special meetings. Three members of the city council are requesting that item be considered, reconsidered on your agenda must be on the prevailing side of the previous vote on that." Can you have that?
Sure, and when I read this, essentially, what I had meant to, to, to read was that, at some point, and let's look directly, if you guys are using Robert's Rules of Order to guide how you conduct your meetings, the policy that is provided says it's to provide guidance only, so, um, if it's only to provide guidance, then you go ahead and make changes a- as you see fit, and this is one of those types of changes, because under Robert's Rules of Order, in order to bring back a previously decided item, uh, anyone can do it, who voted on the, the winning side. This thing actually, this proposed, uh, provision, uh, provides a much higher burden, it actually doesn't allow someone, one person to change their vote. It requires, well, it would, three people to agree, just to put it back, you don't have to change the vote, just, if you were on the prevailing side, the winning side of the vote, you would still have to convince two other people to do so. When Robert's Rules of Order, uh, only requires one person.
So it's just a matter of preference with the council, you want just one member to be able to bring it back, uh, I think, I think so, because there may be something that is, that may have been overlooked or not, uh, that's just separate from the law, hasn't changed. I think any member of the city council.